I would like to call the May fifteen twenty twenty-three City Council meeting to order at seven P M. I'll rise for a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Role call. We have Tyler has an excused absence and Andrew is online. And everybody else is present. So I'm looking at the agenda, looking for an approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Any we have a motion to approve the agenda as written. Any seconds?
A second.
Second by Councilor McHugh. Any discussion?
If we have public comment on an item deeper in the agenda, do we want to move that up?
I will listen. I mean, that's up to you guys. We have one public comment for an item on the agenda at the later in the agenda. She's possibly looking at moving one item up sooner. Anybody else interested in?
Sure.
Hearing that?
That's fine.
Sure. Okay, what we're looking at maybe doing is moving up number seven ordinance nine sixteen on the camping ordinance, moving it up a little bit to. Anybody want to make a motion? Do we?
I mean, shall we?
Hey, I'm gonna Peter, should I put a vote to the first motion first?
I just to make sure I understand. Are you you want to move? Item seven to?
Haven't decided exactly where yet, but just move it up.
Yeah, you can certainly do that.
We have a motion in a second to accept it as presented. Do I just let that die? Or do we need to vote?
Should probably vote or amend it.
You vote on my motion.
Yeah. You would you would want to resolve that motion in the second.
No.
Okay, all those in favor for leaving the accept the agenda as written say aye. Opposed? Aye. Okay.
Motion.
New motion. Anybody? Want to make a motion to move it up to a specific spot?
Mister Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the agenda with amended order here moving any moving ordinance number nine one six to the top of new business.
We have a motion by Councilor Holmes to move number seven ordinance number nine one six to new business right before discussion of canceling a meeting. Any second? Second by Councilor Santiago. Any discussion?
Why are we doing this again? I'm not opposed to it. Just wondering. I don't know why.
If I guess my reasoning is if we have people here to provide public comment and we have some items that could be lengthy in discussion that we don't have people fall off. Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Reason I was opposed is this individual wants to speak on two things that are towards the bottom. So to me, it didn't matter that we move one up if we're not going to move both and we cannot move the last one due to the attendance of our.
Yes.
So to me, it didn't.
My feeling more Pete is being that it's a a public hearing, first and second reading. I I thought I would like to have it a little sooner to give everybody an opportunity to discuss and talk about it. Not anything personal on it. I just felt that we have more people here at the beginning. It's it's a big item that I thought it would be nice to get to earlier in the meeting.
I I got opposed.
It has nothing to do with this one because like like Council President Grayson said, she's staying all the way through the meeting for another comment at the end. So that won't that wouldn't have made a difference.
I'm not sure I see these as being long agenda items, but you never know. So that's probably a good idea.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of moving number seven up to I guess the new number four state by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. So now seven become four Peter and everything moves down or does it?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, okay. Now we have reached our comment, public comment section. This is a place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to council regarding any matter not on the agenda and not scheduled for public hearing. Members of the public addressing council are requested to give their name and city of residence. Speakers are to limit their testimony to five minutes or we are limited to thirty minutes total for all public comments. Anybody else sign up? Public comment. If you wanted to just give your quick Scappus library. It's not on our agenda, so.
So once again, like usual, we're doing movies in the park.
Name and city?
Twice. Washington County, actually.
Movies in the park.
Yep. So we're going to be doing the standard movies in the park with entertainment before our budget is always between six and seven thousand, including the billboard and all the print and social media that we do plus paying the entertainers. So it's four nights at about fifteen hundred dollars a night and we pay for it. Because the library budget is not that big. We pay for it with grants and with sponsorships.
Yeah.
Thank you. Perfect.
Good program.
Thanks.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Mayor, um, the number seven, formerly number seven, now number four is a public hearing, but item nine is not a public hearing. So I think that you would do.
Do which one?
Nine.
Okay.
There there's not like there's a hearing.
Okay. We don't have a hearing for number nine, so we do have someone that would like to speak on number nine. Here.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. My name is Marissa Jacobs and I am a resident of Scappus for about three years, planning commissioner for close to three years and library budget committee member for about two years. But tonight I'm speaking to you as a citizen and as a professional human resources leader with over twenty years of experience in the field. I had the opportunity to listen to last week's council session on five one and I took note of the conversation regarding city manager annual review. And during the topic, there was a discussion regarding three sixty feedback and there was hesitation as it was potentially viewed negatively. And I'd just like to offer a different perspective for your consideration this evening. During the course of my career personally and professionally leading people, I found three sixty performance reviews highly effective. In fact, all of the companies I've worked for that are Fortune five hundred require three sixty feedback, especially for leaders who operate in a cross functional capacity with a small number of direct reports. The role of city manager fits this description. And let's be honest, to the average person, the title city manager may not carry or express the full gravity of the role itself. The city manager, in my opinion, is equal to the C E O of a ten thousand person business or an executive vice president managing several thousand employees. The city manager of Scappus really is the town C E O who leads our strategic direction alongside county, state and federal representatives and the city council and the staff reporting directly to them. The city manager is is a big role in our town and and it should be given the credit that it that it is. I think it's great that you're asking manager reins directs reports to participate this year. I would encourage you to take the step further and complete a three sixty review. Given the number of directs is small and given the scope of the role, it would be beneficial to include a cross functional individuals to participate as well. Inviting county representatives, state officials or others who this role interacts with regularly would be helpful. By doing so, you would accomplish a few things. One, more perspectives provides a more holistic unbiased view of performance. Two, provides more anonymity for the directs providing feedback. Three, it meets criteria number seven intergovernmental relationships in the evaluation. And four will positively impact city manager reins. This tool will highlight strengths and performance as well as opportunities to focus on. And hopefully you honed in on that word opportunities because the trend has moved away from using the word weakness. And instead, we focus on opportunities for leaders. We are people. We are works in progress. And a three sixty tool really enables leaders to see where they can refine their skills and behaviors to be better leaders and stewards for the people they work with and for. So I highly encourage you to treat the role of city manager similar to an executive V P in a corporate setting. Utilize the tool to enable to enable the city manager to do their best and be their best. Include a three sixty evaluation for this year's performance review. If you have any questions or concerns, I'd be happy to answer at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, anymore public comments? That's in online. Okay. Moving on to a consent agenda. We're voting on a consent agenda, which is May one twenty twenty-three City Council work session meeting minutes, May one twenty twenty-three City Council meeting minutes and reappointment of Scott Jensen and Bill Blank to the planning commission. Looking for a motion to approve?
Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilor Holmes makes a motion to accept as it presented. Second?
I can't vote on the minutes because I wasn't there, so.
Approve.
Move by Council President Grayson. Got them all. Any discussion? I'll have a quick discussion. Since this is on the consent agenda, we don't get to speak about a bunch. I wanted to thank Bill Blank. It's twenty-four years of service. He started as an alternate nineteen ninety-nine, became full time in twenty in two thousand. So this October will be his twenty-fifth year. Says it will be his last time, but we will see about that. See CDC staff is is very grateful and very thankful for your work, Bill. And we all we all owe you a big thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor state by saying aye? Aye? Opposed? Same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. See you next year. Okay, moving on to number two proclamations. We have National Public Works Week. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, public buildings and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of all public work officials. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel whose staff public work department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Joseph Abakis, Mayor of the City of Scappus, do hereby proclaim the week of May twenty-one to twenty-seven twenty-two thirty as National Public Works Week in the City of Scappus. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public work officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort and quality of life. In witness whereof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Scappus to be affixed as fifteenth day of May twenty-two thirty-three. Peter, you'd like to come up? I have one for you. Okay.
Letter.
And a comment real quick from Councilor Miller, who's absent. But we had passed a proclamation last week of of police officers. Today is National Peace Officers Memorial Day, so we just wanted to thank all of those peace police officers, especially that have given their life to help protect us. So I wanted to mention that. Okay, on to old business. Ordinance number nine fifteen and ordinance updating the City of Scappus Stormwater Master Plan. This is our second reading. Possible approval? Any updates?
No updates, Mayor. Yeah, no comments were received that I'm aware of and no changes have been made to the document. Thinking approval is drafted.
Okay, thank you. We have already had a motion in a second to accept the ordinance. So any discussion? So all those in favor state by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Okay, ordinance number nine fifteen and ordinance updating the City of Scappus Stormwater Master Plan passes. Okay. Now we're moving up to our new number four or new number four, which is ordinance nine sixteen, a camping ordinance. Book. Go in order. Okay, so we have ordinance number nine sixteen camping ordinance, public hearing first and second reading. Assistant to city manager Isaac Butman to lead.
I'm Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me tonight. I think I'd like to start with the history. This ordinance goes back about four years. There were some Supreme Court or some cases to the Ninth Circuit that were relating to camping in public places by people experiencing homelessness. And two cases came with rulings that essentially said that it is legal for somebody experiencing homelessness to sit, lie and sleep in public property. So that would be rights of way sidewalks, parks, city facilities, green spaces. And after that, the State of Oregon legislature in their wisdom decided to pass House Bill thirty-one fifteen, which again reinforced that, yes, indeed homeless folks, people who are experiencing homeless can indeed. Yeah, basically. So for all intents and purposes, sit, sleep and lie and use mental measures to keep warm and dry in our public rights of way. And we cannot take actions to basically arrest them because of that. Along with that came a sort of deadline where the interpretation is that cities have about two years to come in and compliance with this to allow it and regulate. We're not a hundred percent positive whether we're going to be preempted from putting something in place after July one twenty-two-three of this year. But most cities are acting like there is a deadline. And most cities are trying to put in place common sense, time, place and manner restrictions on how people experiencing temporary homelessness can sit, sleep, lie and minimally keep warm and dry in our public spaces. And the suspicion is and what some people are concerned about is that if something does not get passed, there is possibility that we would not be able to regulate. That means that if we don't pass something tonight, there's a possibility that we could walk outside City Hall and have people sleeping on the sidewalk. And we would not be able to do anything about it. So that's kind of where we why we're here, why this is important. And it also comes with a general warning that we really don't have an option in this. This isn't something that we can say no to. It's kind of like the psilocybin where we didn't do anything, we were preempted and we had to allow it. So it's kind of our opportunity to look at this and say, what do we want here? Where do we want to do things? How do we want to have things happen here? It's just unfortunately, it's out of our control. So we reached out to our insurer C I S to see if they had a model ordinance. We reached out to other communities that have been, you know, generating these ordinances. You know, with a couple of years working on them, they've gotten better. And we took the C I S model, which I included. And we added a couple of clauses to it to basically increase the health and safety and sanitation type regulation. And if you want, I can walk through the ordinance. So the first section is definitions. This, these definitions are very specific to this chapter. They're constructed specifically so that this chapter can be interpreted a specific way. One of the concerns here, so we did talk with the fire district when we said minimally keep warm and dry, that is the language from the decisions, the court decisions. And the concern here is fire. Obviously, we don't want people to be having campfires. We don't want them to be putting fires in tents. That is not a good idea. So I think that's the really the biggest definitional change from what we got from C I S is we defined fire so that we could include it later on. Section two, purpose. This is to really narrowly construct this ordinance. A lot of cities aren't doing this. They are allowing anybody to take advantage of this. Our take on this is that because the Supreme Court and House Bill thirty-one fifteen looked at this very narrowly in terms of those people experiencing homelessness, we wanted to follow in that path and really keep this limited. Section three is really where we get into the meat of the regulation. Most of this again is directly from C I S. This section essentially states that it's unlawful for people to sit, sleep, lie, et cetera, to camp as defined unless certain provisions are met. It talks about where this cannot happen. It talks about when camping can happen. This this time period happens to line up more or less with when our parks are open. So our look at this says, okay, we have to let folks sit or sleep or lie or in in an area on public. I can go out into a park during the day and I can take a nap. I can sit on a bench. I can walk around. During the day, people who are experiencing homelessness can go do the same exact thing. We don't necessarily need to have a place for them during the day, but at night, when our parks close, we don't have a place. And so this is really getting at that time where there isn't a place in public for them. Again, that's that very narrow construction. C I S is comfortable with this language. We did run this final ordinance through. They were in favor of everything we had in there and did not have comments for us to change. It talks about the manners in which they can do this camping. So you know, we don't want a lot of clutter. We're not looking to have to, you know, remove nails from telephone poles and you know, clean up lean to is built out of pallets. So we're really trying to keep this narrowly targeted and, you know, come in, sleep underneath the law and do do this lawfully and then you can go ahead and move on to parks or whatever you do during the day. We talk a little bit about the kind of motor vehicles, the kind of conduct that we're looking for. This all lines with our code that nothing in here is new. We just kind of pulled pieces from our other code. So how people can keep animals, what their standards of conduct are and just kind of want to put it all in one place. So when we look at this, we can say, okay, here's what we're looking at, you know, in the event that we do have somebody that's doing this, we can just give them essentially a copy and say, here's your code of conduct. Here's what you need to be doing to do this lawfully. We narrowly construct the means by which people can engage in sit, sleep, lie, keeping mentally warm and dry. We don't want giant constructions. That's not necessarily not necessary to the act of sleeping or sitting or lying or keeping mentally dry. So we constrain the size of the covered area to a hundred square feet. That's about a ten by ten tent, which is pretty standard. I do happen to know that's what size of the tents that are handed out by many service organizations are is ten by ten. So some places have it eight by eight and that doesn't really match with what the reality on the ground is. We talk about obstructions to public infrastructure, making sure we can still get to fire hydrants, emergency access, telephone poles, you know, we we don't want to disrupt the public infrastructure or the other members of public from accessing, you know, what they should be able to access, just like you and me. Kind of walk through actions that aren't allowed, such as no dumping of waste, no digging or excavation. Very similar to our or our marijuana ordinance and our psilocybin ordinance, we put in a clause in here that precludes that kind of camping within a thousand feet of schools. And we list out the types of schools. We've done this before. It's just like all the others. We, you know, there's a high incidence of frankly, you know, drug use and other kinds of things are incidents to people with homelessness. Sometimes those people don't have I Ds. We don't know who they are. So you know, there's a there's a good nexus there to say we can't have this within a certain amount of schools, just like we can't have a marijuana establishment or a psilocybin center. And the next section N, where it talks about how they must relocate, this is very important to this. We've worked with the police department. What we don't want to do is have an established campsite. If we do do that, there's a new law that came with thirty-one fifteen. It was a partner bill. And it requires you to take different steps to notice the removal of a designated campsite. So this this portion is going to be enforced actively by the police department. They're they are committed to going and checking and making sure, hey, you know, you've slept overnight. It's time to move on. Here's where you can go. The park's open at seven o'clock, depending on the time here. A little bit about animals, just to make sure that folks who are homeless, who do have animals are abiding by that portion of our code. We don't need people trying to walk around them and have aggressive animals. That was a bad idea. And the violation is allowable. This was in the C I S ordinance. There is a kind of opt out clause at the very end. It allows a municipal judge to waive that if that person engages in services. That being said, there's been some talk about service provision, and I think one of the things that that bears mentioning here is that we don't really have services for homeless folks in this community. It's one of the reasons we really don't have a big homeless population. We don't have, you know, many churches that do much of anything. We don't have county public health. We don't have county mental health. We don't have shelters or food pantries for folks that are experiencing homelessness. And one of the concerns that comes along with these is, well, if we pass this, right, we're going to be calling people. People are going to be coming here. Well, that's not the case anymore because every every single city, every single county in the Ninth Circuit, so that's Oregon, Washington, Idaho. You know, they all have this now. Every single city has to allow this. So people who are homeless don't have to go to Portland or Seattle or wherever to engage in this kind of behavior, this kind of activity anymore. They can just stay where they are.
Yes. Peter?
Yeah. Kind of the the parameters that we looked at, the lens that we looked at was really all about health and public safety. And what we tried to do is look at other jurisdictions and and what has worked and what hasn't, you know, looked at media reports. And you know, there are there are other cities that that have allowed structures to be built and and you know, they're not they're not built to the uniform building code. And that code exists not because we want to put developers through the wringer, but because we want to keep people safe. And in the city of Portland, you know, some of those have been built out of highly flammable materials such as particle board. And that represents a serious risk to anybody that's sleeping in those. And recently, Willamette Week did a story that said that fifty percent of the city of Portland's fire related calls, the fire department were things like this, were were wooden structures, whether it was a lean to or a something that looked more like a hot catching on fire. And, you know, I just, I feel when we talked about this, we we really feel like we have a just even an added need to make sure that people are safe. And part of the way that we do that is make sure that they're not in a highly flammable, sleeping in a highly flammable structure. Part of how we're doing that is trying to eliminate open flames. I represent the city of Gerhart. We had a situation where someone was in a car with a space heater and it caught on fire. And, you know, fortunately, thank goodness, the the person was able to get out of their jacket, which was already on fire and got out of the car. But despite the fire station being within a half mile of this location, our was a total loss. And so these are the things that we're looking at as we're drafting this is you know, how how do we make sure that that people are are sleeping in a clean environment? Part of the way that we would do that is making sure that there's an opportunity for be a public works or police to make sure that's clean. So when they come back for the next evening, if they come back, then they'll have a clean place versus waste or garbage, which, you know, all those things can attract other nuisances. And so what we were really looking at is how can we make this as as safe as possible for all people? Residents and visitors and and folks passing through on a temporary basis, regardless of their housing status. And then how can we mitigate potential harm that we've seen in other jurisdictions? And so that's what we tried to do in the materials that describe as Blake v. Grants Pass. That final decision is called Johnson v. Grants Pass. As Isaac said, it sets out some of the minimum parameters, how we allow beyond said in the case, Grants Pass said people can have a blind. Just, you know, it's not something we would ever do. So, but it does not provide complete clarity. So, but it does not provide complete clarity. So what we have done is looked at Martin, look at Johnson, look at other jurisdictions, incorporate best practices. And I think that, I think that we have some, something that if if people are really looking at it, they'll see that it's a safety based humane policy. And I think that we know it's not perfect because nothing ever is, but we think that this is a pretty solid attempt in order to eat everybody's.
It's interesting, yeah, interesting reading the LOC exhibit too, and there's a lot, it asks more comes up with more questions than it answers sometimes. It's and I look to see, you know, what cities must do, are we doing that and what cities must not do, and are we not doing those and what we can potentially do. So I I think they're on top of it. The one thing I did look at too that I like to see is it says, whereas the city encourages the active participation of all concerned persons, organizations, businesses and public agencies to work in partnership with the city and the homeless community to address the short and long term impacts of homelessness in the community. I would definitely like to see that continue with Columbia County, with St. Helens, with our local cities, get us involved and what else can be done above and beyond the camping ordinance.
Yeah, and that's certainly our intent. And as we look at the House bill, which became the state law, it's a reasonable standard. In every other in every other law I'm aware of where the standard has been reasonable, it's been struck down as unconstitutionally vague. Because what does it mean to be reasonable? But despite that, we really tried our best to come up with reasonable things that, you know, leading with public safety and also compassion and empathy, it kind of helped some people that are really, some of whom are in pretty dire circumstances. And the the other thing that I would say is that if if there are two people that have a what's called a FAPA Family Abuse Protection Act order that our our police know that there are other locations around the county where they can take one of those people to to make sure that they're safe. So that that is the that is the other thing we looked at is making sure that there are options for.
Anything else before we open the public hearing? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to comment on ordinance nine one six and ordinance updating our camping ordinance? I do have one here, number Marissa Jacobs, like to.
Hello again.
Five minutes. Go ahead.
Marissa Jacobs, scapoose. So first, let me state by saying I am in favor of this ordinance. It's unfortunate that our legislature passed House Bill thirty one fifteen, but they did. So now we're in this situation. Overall, I've read through the ordinance. I'm in, I'm aligned with it. So thank you for putting this together. I, the the question, there there's a two questions. One, when it comes to the fine, I saw it's one twenty five. I'm just curious. Where did one twenty come from and why isn't it more? And then two, given the history of it, that this has been enacted, this legislation has been on the books. We had to have a deadline by July to adhere to. Why did it take so long to get here? It seems like we're kind of like rushing with intent, but I'm just curious, like, why haven't we plugged in to the county earlier to start formulating this plan? So that's just part of being a very curious citizen who follows the homeless issue pretty closely. So I would just, if there's an opportunity in this setting, or if you want to refer me elsewhere out, but I would like to kind of understand how we're plugging into the the county as a whole to address this so that we don't find ourselves an attractive place for homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a comment? Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I will come up with something, Marissa, for you. I'd like to know too.
You can address.
Okay, great.
So under House Bill three one one five, I think that our existing ordinance is working. But the the change was the Johnson v. Grants Pass case, which came down September twenty eighth of twenty twenty two. And so I first saw that in October. We have been waiting to see what other cities have done since that case. And the league came out with some guidance in October of last year. We've been watching to see what other cities will do. That's actually the controlling, the controlling law, because under the Martin case, it didn't, it only could it was only if there were certain circumstances that enforcement happened. The Johnson case is much broader in that it, the Johnson case clarified that prohibition wouldn't work. And frankly, I thought a lot of lawyers thought that the legislature would provide further clarity session in response to Johnson. That didn't happen. And so this is based on that. And the other thing, I actually don't feel like we're rushing it, but we wanted to see which ordinance is the ACL, you and other organizations, and the challenge and on what grounds? Or what cities or counties would be threatened with lawsuits and on what grounds? That's happened with the city of Bend and issues county. So that helped me spot potential issues so that we could avoid in similar circumstances.
So taking our due diligence and and looking as long as we possibly could to make sure we got it right.
Right, and we can, we can adopt this in one meeting with an emergency clause that go into effect needed to, or we could do this one meeting, bring it back in a special meeting or another and do that. And I don't I think that there are a variety of things about three one one five in addition to reasonable standard are from a legal perspective, I would hope that any city can learn and would be able to amend code in response to health and safety issues that they come up. And so I guess I I guess I I read that a little bit differently. And if if we are amending our code based on what we're learning and based on best practice, I don't think that we have. I don't think we have much, I don't know that they can just preempt us from doing health and safety code sections. If they can, I've not seen. This is supposed to be kind of a living, breathing thing.
As as for the fine.
Yeah.
Let me explain. So that that just kind of came from CIS. You know, our typical general fine is five hundred dollars. I think the thought behind that is that somebody experiencing homelessness, that five hundred dollars is meaningless. It's so far above their means that it it is essentially, it doesn't mean much. Whereas something like a hundred, hundred and twenty five bucks, maybe that is something they might have in their pocket. So that might give them pause. It's it's a more reasonable, again, like Peter said, what's reasonable? You don't really know. CIS endorses that number. That's the one that they're comfortable with. It's a matter of risk, you know, our insurer says, yep, we're good with that. Kind of where we're at with one twenty five.
Yes, for Santiago.
I mean, I I support this, but I would like to see in section four, under violation on second paragraph, where it says, I know it's if the city refers, I would like it to read more of that he will refer services. And if the individual who has cited the violation in this chapter, individual demonstrates meaningful engagement with a service provider after receiving the citation and before the hearing, the fine will be reduced or eligible for reduce or elimination. The discretion discretion of the judge. I would like to see more of that. I mean, I know mentioned Isaac that there's, we don't, we, as in we don't have, like, city of scapoose. But I know there's, like, for example, community action team, there's resources in the county that it would be great for us to not say if, but more of when we refer these services. I'd like to see that added. And in the meantime, build those relationships with those organizations, have a list of those organizations in hand, ready for for individuals.
You know, in that section, it says if referred, that talks about the fee. Is there anywhere else that it does discuss that they are to be referred? Do you see, does it somewhere else say what happens when we do cite someone? Does it say? Can we make that something outside of the ordinance that we will refer them to media action team or give them a list of possible?
The chief was really involved with this, and I think that from what I've understood is his intention would be to refer them. I don't think that, you know, public safety isn't about locking people up, right? This is about welfare, right? Welfare for people, giving them access to these services, you know, we come across homeless people now. Chief's talked to me about it. LT's talking, oh, yeah, I talked to somebody today, gave them access, took them up to county have mental health, or took them to Portland for these things. And, you know, we we do actively do that. We we don't ignore these people. They are citizens, just like you, me, everybody who's in the city, you know, they they do do that. I think that that's just the way that it was phrased from them.
That that language is from a separate law. That was pulled, I think chief, chief wanted that because that is in law that allows you to provide posted seventy two hour notice and that sweep camps. That's something that you've probably seen it happen in other jurisdictions. Our goal is to never sweep a camp because we would be maintaining that sleeping area every day as it goes along. But I do think I do think that it's really important to bring in other service providers to the extent that you have those sort of things. And I think that was chief's intent. Was that they're not always available to come out. And that's what I've seen in other jurisdictions is called, hey, can you come out? Like, just out of capacity. So, but to the extent that we can, our police can involve them, I I think that's certainly the intent, and I think that's why that language.
I read it as when we refer them, if they demonstrate they meaningfully engaged. But we put the if at the beginning, meaning if they engage and there's discretion, we will.
Yeah, and I was saying, we will refer them. Obviously, referring them is not the responsibility of making sure that they do buy the services that we have, something to give them, hand them, refer them to. That's all I'm saying.
Yes, Counselor Holmes.
I've got a question and a comment. So do we currently have the hours of operation or open hours for parks posted at each park?
And it does, it does fluctuate a little bit between summer and winter hours, but this, this, this timing generally aligns with when parks open. And, you know, in talking with the chief, he said, look, six is pretty early. If I really want the camp clean at six, I'd have to go out there at five. That's not really reasonable. So if we start at six o'clock, they'll be out by seven. Seven's when the parks open. That is reasonable. It's kind of where those numbers came from. We worked with Dave. I mean, we did, there's a list, you know, we all did collaborate on this. We reached out to Pritchard, we, you know, every department had their say, want to make sure we came to review with something that was really well thought out.
Are some of the parks open based on dusk and dark versus a specific time?
No, there's set hours in municipal code regardless of the daylight, although the hours do align with daylight for the most part.
They posted, okay, thank you. And then I guess my comment is, so I I I feel comfortable with where we've landed with the parameters of the ordinance here. The thing that does make me uncomfortable is that we are having to take an executive or a emergency ordinance action here, which does, you know, shorten the amount of time that the public has to provide public comment and review. I feel like this issue was raised and pretty thoroughly discussed at the goal setting meeting. I specifically asked and said, we need to make sure that what we have as an ordinance aligns with the new law. Suggested if we needed to do a gap analysis to make sure there was nothing additional we need, that that step would be taken. And was told that there's been no change in the law that would invalidate what we have on the books. And so here we are, having to pass something relatively quickly. No other city in Columbia County is having to do this. So this, this is what makes me a little bit uncomfortable about how we are having to proceed with this, though I, again, I think you guys were putting together a well constructed ordinance.
Okay, yes.
Just mentioned that, you know, I'm not wrong. Second readings don't usually come in public hearings, so.
Unless we vote to open it up, but typically they do not. Okay, any more discussion? None? Is there any motions?
Actually, sorry, may, can I ask a couple of questions?
Oh, please.
Can you, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
So most of the the questions or feedback I have are raised by other counselors, but just to 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 verify the the police chief, it sounds like you guys worked quite a bit when drafting this ordinance. He didn't have any concerns about extra, extra work involved with this?
No.
Ordinance.
No, he did not.
No, he he actually talked about designing some cards to hand out to people who work experiencing homelessness to inform them of how they could engage in this in ways that are lawful. About directing them, what's where they can and can't be, just to make sure that, you know, we reduce the burden on the police department in the long run and public works as well, you know, if there's something happening, there would be some cleanup. So trying to make sure everybody's aware and we keep everybody happy and safe and healthy.
Perfect, thanks, Isaac. And then lastly, the, you know, as others have stated, the the quick turnaround, I'm a little bit surprised that there was only one public comment. Does this, the city feel like, I I know there is going to be some extra effort to push this awareness about this ordinance out. Does this, the city feel like the the public awareness is there and there's just not as much comment as as I would think?
I would say I don't think we've done anything differently with this as we do with anything else. I think it's hard to gauge. I think from my my staff perspective, it's just one of those things where, and we can't really say no. So I I think it makes it hard sometimes. I I don't want to speak for the public. I think it would be hard to know when we can't say no to something and it's kind of being forced upon us. Maybe maybe people looked at this and said, well, we don't really have a choice. I'm not sure.
I do. HB three one one five was asked to us while we were running back in October and September, so it's been on the radar, but ever since then, I've never got a good, clean feeling or understanding of what it entails and what it's going to mean. So up until now, I mean, this is finally when I I'm starting to see fruits of the labor of what we have to do. And but yeah, I too would have felt more comfortable maybe, but the only thought would have been it allows for more public comment and we didn't get much to begin with. And I haven't had a lot of people asking me in the last couple of weeks or months about it. So I feel comfortable to where we are. And like Peter said, this this sets a groundwork. We can, over time, make adjustments to it as needed.
And the way that I read House Bill three one one five, and I think the legislative record, it was that cities that didn't have camping ordinances could have could adopt reasonable camping ordinances in that two year period. We already had ordinances regulating camping during that period. Like, we we looked, we looked at this a year ago. We looked at it after that legislative session. We then, when Johnson came out, looked at it all again. And it was only when other people started saying, I I don't know why people said, oh, well, you can't change anything after July one twenty twenty three. Like, that's just not how I interpret House Bill three one one five. But I interpret it how I just said. If if a if a city didn't have camping ordinances and they had, they needed to adopt them in this safe harbor. But a couple of months ago, some other people started saying, well, you can't do anything after July one twenty twenty three. And so what I said to Alex is I don't want to be wrong on this. I don't want to be wrong on this one. So if we're going to, you know, my preference would not be to do this now. My preference would be to wait until the issue is litigated. Um. Johnson might be going to the US Supreme Court. It was a two to one ruling with the dissenting. Judge on the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals specifically suggesting that the Supreme Court take up this matter. Um, and. But, um. I think that. I guess. Maybe plausibly, you could say that that you have to have everything in place in the two-year period, and if that's. If that has any chance of being the correct interpretation and it has some chance. Then, you know, my advice to Alex and the staff are like, well, let's. Let's look at what CIS did. And in looking at it, you know, they allowed wooden structures, which made me incredibly uncomfortable because I feel like those are very unsafe. Um, so we did a lot of tweaking. Um, using. The data that we're aware of and the experiences of other communities. I think that this can be revised next year. I don't think it's particularly close. But, um. But there's some that would disagree with me, so. Uh, so I guess I, because we've been working on this for over a year, I don't feel like we rushed it. Um, but I understand that because this hasn't been in front of the community during that time, other people might believe that. Feels fast.
I just, I would just like to second Peter's point, you know. As the staff who was helping write this, it was incredibly helpful to have other cities take that first step and. Basically get shot down, right? We we didn't have to go back again and rewrite it. You know, we got the benefit. Of having things. Be ruled against or changed. You know, our our insurer has been aware of this and they've had time to craft this and to work on it. Lots of other lawyers, lots of other people have had their eyes on it to really make this thing. Stand up and being able to take a document and really only have to make some tweaks versus writing something new, you know, you have a lot of assurance that. We're writing that it has had a lot of eyes, that it's not just us. Scappus alone out there on the edge again. Um. You know. Just my two cents.
Okay, any more discussion? And now looking for a suggested or a motion.
Well, would it be able to modify that section four? Or the verbiage?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I mean, my understanding is they will be referred to services. Um, and the if is just if they engage in it. But if we can change it, then when the city refers to service provider who's cited. And it, I mean. How would we reword that the easiest? Put change it to say if an individual demonstrates they meaningfully engage with. Um, a service provider after the city refers them, the individual. Change it to that. Is there?
Interpret Counselor Santiago's removing the if and saying when, when the city refers a service provider to an individual.
That does enough because that also shows that they have to demonstrate. It's not just when they refer, but then they demonstrate, okay?
Sorry, I I don't know if I misinterpreted.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're right. I was gonna say a city will refer, but when they refer.
When the city?
The city refers.
City will refer.
The city refers the service provider to an individual who has cited for violation of chapter in the individual. Demonstrates they meaningfully engage with that or another similar service provider after receiving citation before the hearing, the fine, okay? Just changing the word if to when? Hey, anybody? Track the motion?
The motion to.
Do you want to read it?
Oh.
Read it. Like that.
One hundred.
It is an emergency, you need to read it. Soon.
One eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine?
Yep.
One eighty-nine.
Sorry, but they. Sue.
You have it? Thank you. All right, um. This is just the verbiage, so the or.
As written, just read it all and then, um, as amended.
Sure, because I don't have it here.
I move that council declare an emergency and adopt ordinance nine one six. As amended. An ordinance amending the scappus municipal code creating title nine, chapter nine point two four camping activities on city-owned public property for those experiencing homelessness. As amended.
We have a motion to accept. Any seconds? Second by Counselor Santiago. Any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye, aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, so we have a motion passes. And we declared emergency and adopted ordinance nine one six and ordinance amending the scappus municipal code creating title nine, chapter nine point two four camping activities on city-owned public property. For those experiencing homelessness as amended. Emergency ordinances go into effect immediately. We got to go back. Onto number five. Right, uh, discussion of canceling July third, twenty twenty-three city council meeting. Any discussion? I guess I could say I would be out of town that day anyway. And I am perfectly fine coming back next week, the the next week if something is. Important that we need to get to.
So typically speaking, in the last several years, we have canceled the meeting right around the Fourth of July. I know a lot of people are taking time off. Um. Usually it's a little, just a little bit of a break for everyone in the summer. Um, you know, usually we have so much going on that we don't cancel one in August as of late, but. Um, it is kind of a nice for everyone to get a little bit of a break. So typically speaking, we kind of move forward with the assumption that's going to happen. So right now, we do have things scheduled in a way that would allow that meeting to be canceled.
Need a vote, just a discussion? Just a vote. Um, do I hear a motion? Monday, July third.
To cancel our council meeting for Monday, July third.
Counselor Santiago makes a motion to counsel. July third, city council meeting. Second.
Second.
Second, but Counselor McHugh, any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye, aye. Andrew, all those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number six, resolution twenty-three dash oh seven, a resolution declaring surplus public works property. Public Works Director Dave Sukat.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, good evening. Um, so as the, as you stated there, the scappus public works department does have several items that it would like to remove from its inventory for either maintenance. And or safety issues with the equipment. Um, there's a list provided of that equipment. And via resolution twenty-three oh seven, we would just be seeking your approval to surplus that equipment out.
Yes, Council President Grayson.
We have some. Interested citizens who. Like. Some of these items to be available for purchase. How does that, what, how do you then? How do you send them to auction or where do you do it or how do you?
And that will be sent to Jay Stout Auctions in Portland.
Perfect. Thank you.
And that auction will be on the twenty-fifth.
Of May.
Yes, correct.
I do have a follow-up question.
Yeah.
Do you, you don't participate in the surplus programs? For the state? On equipment and vehicles?
Do not. We researched different avenues and this brings the most return to the city.
Do you go and participate in these auctions as well at times?
I do not.
Do we buy anything? We we don't always buy brand new, do we?
Um, actually, we do, um, but we haven't bought a lot of this type of equipment, but when we do, we do buy new. You know, with the world of public works, you need dependable equipment, you know, when our need comes, that's in the time of. Desperation and we need our equipment to work, so we do keep it fairly new and well maintained. Um, the items that are listed here are obviously are very dated. The mower throws its drive line out from underneath it when you try to mow. Um, the truck has not been very dependable. That three-inch trash pump actually may stay in inventory. We're currently looking to rebuild it. Um, the saw is having, uh, arbor issues and bearings that we can no longer get parts for. The hydraulic power generator is more of a safety concern. Um, I personally have been burned by that when it had an oil leak. sprayed me with some hydraulic oil. Um, the ONAN generator, the public or the police department tried to surplus that out about four years ago and got no bids on it, so. And at this point for us, um, the real estate is where we're lacking. We don't have a place to store this equipment and so. Remove it.
Any more discussion? Any motions?
Here, I move the council to adopt resolution twenty-three oh seven dash resolution declaring public works surplus property.
Motion by Counselor McHugh, any seconds?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Holmes, any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries. For seven, utility rates, Public Works Director Dave Sukat. Discussion.
Yep, Mayor Council, um, at the work section for the stormwater master plan, there was a desire by council to discuss the utility rates holistically and kind of gather what the big picture is. And so we're going to take that opportunity tonight to work through that with you. Um, hopefully this presentation is relatively straightforward. Uh, and please, um, feel free to ask any questions as we move forward because I like the open dialogue rather than waiting until the end if you'd like. So tonight, we're just going to be talking about water, wastewater and stormwater fees and rates as they currently are, and then the projected rate increases. The services that the city provides, um, at fee is water, wastewater and stormwater services. Those are all included on the utility bill.
Good mind.
Uh, specifically to the water, um, I'm just going to read off of this and like I said, jump in if you've got any questions. Uh, charges for services are based on two primary components. There's the base fee and the commodity fee. Base fees are established by the meter size, uh, three-quarter meter, which you typically see at a a standard residential home, base fee is thirty-seven fifty-eight this current fiscal year. Rates vary for inside and outside city users. There are some outside users up Dutch Canyon that pay a slightly higher rate than the inside city limit users. Uh, commodity rates vary from thirty-eight cents to fifty cents per hundred gallons, which we call a seagall. Uh, water rates were evaluated and updated in twenty twenty-one per resolution twenty-one dash thirteen. Um, at that time, I brought forth a proposal to council because the city had not raised the commodity portion of those rates in many, many, many years. Um, and it wasn't making sense to me to not bring them both up in some sort of a fashion. And in working through a couple of different sessions with council. Um, we came up with a rate that council felt. Rewarded those who conserve water. Um, to, as in senior citizens and people who don't have a high demand to pay less and then incentivize. On the higher end for people to conserve water by establishing that fifty cent price.
Our question then.
Yeah.
So that's, is that like your first hundred gallons is at this rate? And if that's all you do, then you stay at that rate, but anything over that?
Multi-thousand gallon bears brackets. Um, there's like five different brackets. I can give you that information. I have it with me, but it's thousand gallons. Would you like hit that detailed information or it's all of that information is on the city's website for anybody interested in seeing it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will say that when we had that discussion, there had previously been, um, a gentleman that came in that had said. You know, I basically use no water. I'm charged this base fee, you know, I get that, but. We were just, we were trying to be conscious of people who. Definitely are trying to save water and that gentleman in particular was very passionate about saving water. And so when we had that discussion, we were being mindful of. Use of water, um, and I think that we captured it in the tiers that we created. Um, when we created that that largest tier. Um, we had thought about or you had kind of educated us on. Some of the bigger, um, maybe like commercial sites or something that were, those were the very few that were ever kind of getting to that. That highest level, um, and that most of the population was kind of falling into that. Like second, third tier. Um, you know, people like to water their grass and you know, that that kind of bumps them into a higher tier. Based upon. Am I capturing that?
You're you're spot on. That is exactly how it was just.
Logic with creating that.
Yeah, and actually, as I recall, council broadened the range even more so than I had proposed, so. But it was, it was great. It was very productive. Um, I think it's working well in comparing. Rates against what our costs are right now. I think that the water structure is is good. I don't see anything more than. What the indexing is for the near future for the city on any increases, so. Great. Um, and then there are additional fees that exist in charge for water connections, like feasible water sales, um, so on. If there's, uh, that we have a hydrant meter program where, um, contractors say can come and rent a hydrant meter and and hook it up somewhere. They pay the flat fifty per hundred for that. Um, statistically, I am seeing that that is too low. When when I compare those numbers against the others, I don't think, we we actually start to show a loss in profit. By selling that much bulk, so that tells me statistically that we need to bring those numbers up and that will be reflected in this year's fee resolution.
Can you explain when someone would need to hook up to have that much water, like a contractor?
Yeah, if there's a a construction project here locally, that would be the time that those contractors typically will reach out to us for those meters. They'll pay.
A house.
Ah.
Like building a house.
No, actually, building a house doesn't use enough. They they get to use the meter, um, at the at the home site for that purpose. Uh, typically, this is to build the subdivision for the homes or a larger.
Yeah.
Apartment complex or something. But typically, just building a house itself doesn't demand this.
I forgot what I was gonna ask. Go ahead.
Okay, moving on to wastewater. Um, so, okay, similar to water, wastewater rates are also have a base fee and commodity rate. Uh, base fees for wastewater are established by user type and are currently sixty-four thirteen for a basic residential service. Commodity fees are established by a combination of user type and water usage per hundred. Um. That information is as well available on our website. Uh, wastewater rates, um, also vary based on residential or commute, uh, commercial type users. Um. Wastewater rates were evaluated in twenty twenty-two and updated in resolution twenty-two ten. This came to be when we took on the SRF loan. Required by the state as a part of that to ensure repayment of that loan. And to do that, we had to lock in on a seven percent rate increase for five years. One of those years is now behind us, so we'll be coming into year two of that, so four more years of that locked rate. The way that that is drafted, it's seven percent. Or the index, whichever is higher this year, um, we're going to get to it here in a minute, but is, uh, at seven point two percent, so we'll be using that rate fee moving forward. Questions on wastewater? Uh, stormwater, charges for service for stormwater are based on user type and ESU. ESU stands for equivalent service unit and equals twenty-seven hundred and fifty square feet of impervious surface driveway parking lot, so on so forth. Uh, user types for stormwater are single-family, multifamily and commercial. Single-family users are charged for one ESU. Multifamily and commercial fees are calculated based on ESUs for that particular service. Um, the stormwater rates were established in on resolution fifteen dash twenty-one. Prior to twenty fifteen, the city didn't have any stormwater fee. Um, Chris can actually touch on that if you would like to get some history behind that. And that's about it for stormwater. Um. When we get a little deeper into this, we're going to talk about some of the rates that were proposed in the stormwater master plan as a part of our discussion, so. Questions on stormwater? She'd like.
What would you, what would you like to know?
General history.
Um, we. We were, um, Michael had become the city manager and was. Concerned that we didn't have a program to do any street sweeping or catch base and maintenance, and so, um. We wanted to establish a rate so that we could start to pay for those services. Uh, the storm systems hadn't ever really been maintained in scappus prior to then, so we purchased. A used street sweeper from the city of Forest Grove. And established a rate to start to pay for that. And a back, I'm sorry, back truck, I'm sorry, back truck. We didn't get the sweeper until.
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah, later. Yeah, later. So those are the things that it currently tries to pay for. I don't think it entirely funds those activities. But um, we're making progress.
Any questions on stormwater? All right, moving on. Uh, water wastewater rate increases. So utility rates are set by resolution. Nothing moves forward without council's approval. Adjustment of the city's fees and rates are established by the annual fee resolution. So it'll be coming to you in about a month. Um, annual utility rate increases are. It's up by resolution seventeen sixteen. So what this is, is the index that we use, which is the twenty-city average. Um, Chris will pulls that data annually, provides it staff, and then we update all of our rates accordingly. And as I mentioned, for this year, it's going to be seven point two percent. For the NRCCI, the rating increase, oh, I mentioned that seven point two percent. And then resolution twenty-two-ten states that wastewater rates will increase by the seven percent, as I mentioned earlier, seven percent for four more years. Or the index, whichever is higher. Questions there? Uh, stormwater rate increases. Okay, so in the stormwater master plan, there were three basic levels of service provided. I guess, and there's questions coming. Um, so the master plan obviously was adopted tonight. And you've all seen the financial analysis. So what I'm hoping to take away, I won't get into this slide too much. Um, other than the bottom line is there is, I'm hoping to get some direction from council tonight and which one of these levels of service. Is preferred by you so that we can get that properly on the fee resolution. So the basic level of service would be a hundred and twenty-seven percent increase to thirteen twenty-seven. Recommended would be a hundred and eighty percent increase from where we currently are to sixteen thirty-eight. The aspirational would be a hundred and ninety-two um with a five point five increase after to follow. Uh, which would put us at seventeen oh eight for this upcoming fiscal year. Previous two rates would just be the three percent, which actually wouldn't be. That's just what the master plan said. We would follow the indexing that the other utilities are using.
Go ahead, councillor Santiago.
Um, what does that look like? Uh, I'm recommended to aspirational for a. Single family home. What does that look like? Average difference between sixteen point thirty-eight versus. To seventeen point oh eight.
Well, that's three dollars and eleven cents per month.
At two times. Times twelve. That's it? I mean, in general, that's it? Oh, I've no per.
No, that's three ESU. So any residential home will be that flat rate. That's their month.
That rate. Okay.
My biggest problem is it's going from five point eight five to any of those numbers. So that first jump is going to be big.
Which is true, but if you remember looking back and, and I don't advocate for this necessarily, looking at other cities. Because everybody has their own dynamic that creates a situation they're in, but that we're way behind the curve right now. This brings us to align with what other cities within the Pacific Northwest tend to average. By getting up into the recommended and basic level of service.
Councillor President Grayson.
Steve, is it accurate to say that without these changes, we can't provide the level of service needed? And already we're unfortunately missing the mark because there's just.
Let me jump in. Yes, you are correct. You are, you are exactly correct. And the, and the stormwater master plan talks about that. We're, we're one point three FTEs short of being able to meet service needs. We are no lo, I mean, we're not doing our UIC requirements. We're, we're not meeting what DEQ is mandating of us yet. Really, the street sweeper is about all we're providing right now and a couple of catch basins clean per year.
In regards to stormwater?
Yes, correct.
Um, regardless of the amount, I think the, the recommended items that you brought up in your stormwater master plan is where I feel comfortable. We need to get at least that, those recommended services.
We're not looking pretty formal, but is that comfortable across the board?
Doesn't have to be comfortable.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, is everybody kind of seeing that same dynamic? See much for here, but okay, perfect.
Andrew.
Uh, yeah, just real quick, without getting too much into the, the history or, or place, I'm not trying to place blame. I'm just, i- is there a. A quick answer to on how we got so far behind on these increases? Is, is this, was this not approved by previous councils or just? Uh, and it's more for moving forward on how to stay up, not about trying to find blame.
Oh, yeah. The original, when the, in twenty fifteen, when the stormwater fee was established, it was three dollars a month. I don't know exactly how they landed on that. Chris is telling me that in a previous master plan, which would have dated back twenty years ago.
Well, we didn't, we didn't have recommendations from the old master plan. It was from like two thousand and two or whatever year that was, two thousand and four was fairly old. It was out of date. So wasn't, there wasn't uh, E that I remember that was recommended. So we just landed on three because it just seemed like a good starting point. We knew that it was inadequate. We didn't, we didn't really have a lot of basis for that cost, just kind of a starting.
By twenty seventeen, we realized that the three dollars wasn't enough and got into the five dollar range. Um, but we're still realizing that that's not enough. And, and the master plan helps to find that. We've kind of been laying low over the last couple of years. Waiting for the findings of the master plan to make sure what those projections needed to be. And now that we have that data. That's how we comfortably feel for, or, you know, can move forward comfortably presenting that to you.
And, and I might add also that we did a, uh, public works and myself, staff. We did a, a pretty detailed analysis of current costs with. Uh, we do some uh, water quality maintenance on facilities throughout the city on various facilities. Um, for instance, like the Cascade Tissue Storm Pond is actually a city to ma- maintenance responsibility. And so we were able to, you know, figure out how long it took to maintain facilities like that and filter basins and things and. And, and factor those in, which back in two thousand and fifteen, we didn't have a data, so. And, and also the cost of the sweeper and the active truck, so. Question I have then is, we, sorry, Andrew.
Oh, yeah, thanks, Chris and Dave. That context helps. Appreciate it.
So were we just providing five dollars and eighty-five cents worth of service? Or were we providing more and it was coming out of a general fund budget?
Not general fund budget, but other utilities were sacrificing to keep up with minimum requirements, yes.
Okay, any more questions? Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. We're on to our final. Item of the night. Um, number eight, city manager evaluation revised process. Legal counsel Ashley Driscoll. Take it away.
Uh, good evening, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, so this is a whole on our last meeting. Um, our last meeting introduced the city manager evaluation process for this year. And during the course of that discussion, council asked me to bring back options for questions to ask direct reports. To add into the city manager evaluation for this year. So I went back and checked internally, um, what the other cities that we represent do for either three sixty or direct report. Um, inclusion in a city manager evaluation. I put together all those notes that I had on that, as well as looked around, um, other cities that we do not represent. And put together the information that is in the council packet. Um, although all examples will, will work or any combination of questions, my recommendation was actually from the first city that I looked at. And in that city, they actually hired an outside consultant to conduct a city manager um evaluation. And met personally with a variety of individuals. But I think these questions work pretty well um for direct reports, providing written responses. So I put those nine questions directly in my memo to council. So if you're looking for a recommendation from me, it would be to authorize me to email Alex's direct reports, these nine questions. Ask that they submit written responses to me, or if they prefer, we can have a verbal conversation and they can provide me that feedback. I will put all that feedback together for the council, um, for your review ahead of our next meeting. And the information from the direct reports, um, especially if they request it, would not have their names associated with it. So, you know, if there's six direct reports that respond, you'd get all six responses, but without um a credit for who said what. So any other questions for me? If not, it's a discussion among the council.
Did you get responses back from some of our council members on their recom- or recommendations?
No, I heard from one councillor, um, you know, just saying that they would like to include this going forward. But no um responses from members of the council regarding individual questions.
I think I did email at least. Saying that, yeah, I did like the same questions that you had on there. I mean, I hope you got that.
I did get that, yep.
Okay.
It was brought up to a public hearing. Um, I, I'm not in the HR uh, industry and, and so. My, uh, what is your definition of a three sixty?
Right, so I mean, a three sixty, there's no one set definition. I came in and I heard a little bit of that public comment. Um, but I think, you know, what she was referring to and what traditionally a three sixty is direct reports. You know, sometimes includes, especially with city managers, outside members of the community that they work closely with that are not direct reports. Um, you know, in a, a variety of, of those individuals.
It's just a larger, um, you know, pool of people. That uh, is asked these questions, not just basically internal and external.
I mean, some three sixties are internal and external. Other three sixties are, you know, everybody that they report to. Plus everybody that reports to them, you know, is also a three sixty.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
So I guess following up kind of on, on that thread in the public comment. I mean, given that, so are you seeing three sixties are increasingly more common? I think we talked about them being used in some. Cycle at some point.
I will tell you that, that none of the cities that I work directly with, and I think only one in our client group. Does a three sixty that involves individuals outside of the organization. And the ones that I'm aware of, you know, don't do it on a yearly basis, but maybe do it um every couple of years. Does that answer your question?
Does, uh, thanks. So I guess is, if, do we want to discuss if it's not appropriate for this year? Do we bake it in for next year? Do we have plenty of time to plan for that? And Alex is prepared as well? There's no surprises? Would we, is that something we would need to decide like this evening to put into place for next year? Or how much prep time do we need?
Well, more than I think like one meeting, but for next year, if that is something that the council's interested in, my recommendation is to hire a consultant to do it. And so, yes, like a heads up now that that's what your guys are going to want next year is, is great. And then what we can do is work on a small budget for that. And, you know, starting probably, you know, January of next year, we'll look at hiring that consultant and getting, you know, the. The details of that three sixty narrowed down and then letting that person go and do, do the evaluation. So there is a substant, there is a substantial amount of work that does go into it, including, you know, who's involved in that. Who, who decides who's involved in that? Is that something that the council does on their own or in collab, or collaboration with Alex? Um, and then, you know, what is the scope of that review? So. Definitely, you know, if the council wants to do that, I think on, on a regular basis, perhaps not every year. Uh, we'll want to nail down the terms of that and, and have some time for advanced planning.
I had a question follow up. You said internal and external. Would you consider committee members or fire chiefs? Um, county commissioners, um, those as internal or external, people she works with directly, they're not citizens.
Yeah, I would definitely consider those external. So internal, I would consider employees and members of the council. So the direct supervisor, which is you. And then subordinate employees. And I want to correct something. I think our largest client does do a, does involve outside. Um, individuals in a three sixty type review of their city manager every couple of years. I want to correct my statement on that.
Okay, so today we're looking at, or right now, we're looking at just the sample questions or um. Adding them to our evaluation. We've already voted on the um. Evaluation process and timeframe, and now we're looking at these questions. I understand it correctly. Emotions?
Not yet.
Not yet.
I kind of, I do, I have a, a question. Uh, some of these are, um, I like them to be, and. Some of these questions you can answer with a yes or no, I mean realistically. Um, like, do you feel city can adequately support the opportunities you have worked? It's like yes or no. I would almost um ask like.
Please explain.
Please explain or a little bit more elaboration on the questions. Because it seems like if anybody wants to answer and they can just say yes or no. And just don't, not give them the opportunity just to do that.
So which, sorry, which one we're using that is?
I, I just picked number eight, for example.
City A.
Okay.
Just do you, do, you know, do you feel the city provides adequate support?
So an add up, please explain after that, perhaps?
Example or.
Open the question, just to be more elaborate with them.
Okay.
Ashley, I have a broader question. Um, Mr. Mayor for the council. Um. It's my understanding that these questions are specifically to evaluate the city manager. So in my opinion, um, I don't know if seven, eight or nine reflects her directly. Um. Seven says, how is morale among city employees? Number eight, do you feel that the city provides adequate support and opportunities to have your workplace concerns addressed? Or nine, how do you feel that the city's vision and core values are projected into your daily work? Those do not specifically address Alex and her performance.
I actually disagree with that because it, as a leader, you do, um, as a leader of that organization, you do. Uh, reject the, or start the morale of the culture of your, where you work and the directions and the opportunities. So I do think as a leader of the city, she, it would fall on her.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If that's the case, then it's my recommendation that the staff have the same questions um to answer about council. I think that we create a tone and an environment that affects their workplace environment and their morale. Um, and I'd like us to be nice for that as well.
Is there a way to adjust the, to say, how does Alex? Um, you know, how does she work with morale amongst city employees? Or how does she, just trying to fi- make it specific to her and um, and those questions.
So again, Mr. Mayor, I'd argue that I think that the morale amongst city employees is not solely determined by Alex. It's determined by us. And I know that the decisions and the things that we directly say and do as a council. Directly affect the morale of the staff. And that's something that Alex, she didn't create that. She didn't create that morale or that. That tone, it was something that we did. And so sometimes staff. Needs to have Alex sort of calm the waters based upon something that we have said or done. And so I don't think that the morale of city employees is directly just her. I think it, it's also us. So if we want to keep the question there, how is morale among city employees? Then I think we need to be open to getting feedback from staff about us and not just Alex.
Was that somewhat gotten at during the state survey? Didn't we get some levels of satisfaction measurement from staff? And that's more broadly than just the direct reports or the department heads?
I wouldn't say that was directed at council, but I mean, maybe they could have meant that and just not clarified. Um, but I don't think the state survey was really as much about council. Also, most of the state survey um respondents, a lot of them, they're never in front of council. Frontline staff.
I'm fine without the question altogether, if it's just ambiguous and too general. Um, on number eight. I could say, do you feel that Alex provides adequate support and opportunities? Um, on number eight, I could say, do you feel that Alex provides adequate support and opportunities to have your workplace concerns addressed? Possibly.
I guess I, I would maybe like an opportunity to rework number seven, because I think there's some merit in that. I mean, she is the CEO, right? Of the organization and the town. And so I do think, you know, I've, you know, li- there, there's a lot that's set. By the tone of leadership and that. So I think there's validity in that question. But I can also see what you're saying, that it does not entirely rest on her. So there may be a way to kind of tease that apart. So it's more appropriate and specific for a performance review.
Yes.
Um, how about amending the question to how does Alex's leadership impact morale among city employees?
Yeah, that's what I, I mean, exactly, because I, two, three, and four all talk about leadership and effective leader and representing and strength. So I mean, those all affect your morale. That would be good.
So we could do something similar with eight and nine. Um, instead of the city, do you feel that Alex provides adequate support and opportunities to have your workplace concerns addressed? How do you feel that, oh, well, number nine is a little bit trickier. And. I mean, I could rework that to, to reflect their.
Yeah, because reading A, I would say that would, that should come to us too. I mean, are we providing you the support and opportunities? Um. Is there a way to rework it that it's her, her, um. Job duties, um. I guess like when you have workplace concerns, are they being addressed by Alex? Do you feel that you have support? When your concerns, yeah, when you're got concerns in the workplace, are they being addressed? And do you have support of Alex?
How about does Alex adequately support your workplace concerns and provide opportunities to have them addressed?
That sounds good to me. And the last one, yeah, cities vision, um, you know, our goals. Not sure if they all know our goals and vision.
Mr. Mayor, I would argue that that's the only thing that.
Direct reports that'd be answering these definitely would, because they're the, they're the people that are assigned the goals. So, yes. They would fully be aware and be able to answer that.
Because we're answering that. Did you copy? Just see if you're awake. Any other questions? Did we leave that one alone?
Could I get nine or eight again? So what did we end up on that one? Does Alex adequately support you as an employee and address your concerns? Is that where we ended up on that one?
Basically, yes.
Does Alex provide adequate support and address your concerns?
If you say do, does she, then you'd have to say how.
Okay.
Or would you not want to put like the department's concerns if this is the, the head of the department?
Yeah, does Alex adequately support your department's concerns? Adequate support your department and address your concerns and then how?
I think that makes sense, yeah.
And then nine is the status quo, stays as is?
Yes.
And then Ashley, in the background, um, for the process, did you say that it would be up to the employee? As to whether they wanted their name associated with their answers or not?
Yeah, I mean, some employees, just in how they answer the question, provide their identity. So for instance, you know, I, I'm doing one recently and it was like in my department, the police department. You know, the city manager does X, Y, and Z. That person was clearly fine with their identity being revealed. Um, and so they can certainly answer the questions in a way that reveals their identity. Or they can choose to answer the questions with a little bit more anonymity.
Okay, yeah, I thank you for that clarification, because I would prefer that, yeah, it be as anonymous as possible.
Okay, any more questions, discussion, then we need to vote on that?
Yeah, and I think the appropriate motion would be, I move to approve the recommended questions. As amended for direct reports to be included in the City Manager Evaluation.
Do I have a motion? Yes, Council Santiago.
I move to approve the recommended questions as amended. For direct reports to be included in the City Manager Evaluation.
We have a motion, my Council Santiago, to approve the recommended questions as amended for direct reports to be included in the City Manager Evaluation. Any seconds?
I will second that.
Counselor Holmes, more discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye, aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Good night, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, calendar. Um. I read all of June too. Got twenty-five minutes. Okay, uh, starting Thursday, June eighteenth, Park and Rec Committee Meeting at six P M. Saturday, May twentieth, Farmers Market, nine A M to two P M. Thursday, May twenty-fifth, Planning Commission Meeting at seven P M and Farmers Market, Saturday, May twenty-seventh, nine A M to two P M. City offices are closed on May twenty-ninth and on May thirtieth, fifty-year SAC Meeting at six P M. And Farmers Market again every Saturday in June, nine A M to two P M. June fifth, Council Work Session, six P M, Council Meeting at seven P M. Thursday, June eighth, Planning Commission at seven P M. Followed by June fifteenth, E D C Meeting at noon and later in the evening, Parks and Rec at six P M. Council Meeting, June nineteenth, six P M. No work session on that one and.
There is a, I believe, a urban renewal meeting before to approve that budget and then.
So that would be at six and regular council meeting at seven? Yeah, and, um, Planning Commission on June twenty-second at seven P M. Okay, update, uh, City Manager reins.
I don't have anything.
Um, counselors, Council Santiago. Council McHugh.
I think.
Council Holmes.
Um, just a couple. I attended, um, the Quarterly League of Oregon Cities, uh, Small City Meeting that was held in Rainier. A couple Fridays ago and the league unveiled their new, um, kind of, uh, direction, vision. Um, and missions that they'll be putting together, services for cities, a lot more I think will be offered for small cities like ourselves. Um, so it's always a good time to get together with other city managers and elected officials of these small communities and exchange ideas. So I would encourage, um, those that can attend to attend, um, but really be on the lookout for all of the new resources that'll be coming down. The line from them over the next year or two. And then, uh, I attended the Omic Fab Lab unveiling, which was fun. Lots of great activities offered for the community. They'll be offering classes. Um, so yeah, just another great addition, um, and hope to see more visibility for Omic. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, um, Andrew LaFrenz.
Oh, yeah, I just briefly want to thank the city staff for all the great work they do in preparing these packets and updating the council. Thanks.
Thank you, Council President Grayson.
Just wanted to thank Dave, um, you know, we had that proclamation at the start. And I think that Public Works is one of the most vital departments we have in the city. Talked about wastewater, stormwater. In water, roads, sidewalks, parks, all the things, um, had an umbrella. So thank you for what you and your team do. Um, been really nice to have the nice weather and see that our parks are ready and, and, um. And in their, their, their best state to have visitors and having people out at the fountain. And it just makes it feel nice and cozy. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, echo Megan's on, um, Public Works. I think the, the work you do is great. It's the bones of the city. It doesn't always get the, um, all the headlines, but it's very important. You only hear when there's a problem. Um, I was able, happy belated Mother's Day for all those yesterday. It was a great day. Um, I wanted to give a special shout out to Megan Grayson for leading, uh, her leadership with the Grant Watts Auction on Saturday. We went out to the fairgrounds. That was a great evening. Um, a lot of money raised for Grant Watts Parent Organization. I think that's great. Um, yes, please, go ahead.
Police Department donated a police chief for a day package and it went really well. So I'm excited that. It gets to, I don't know what that's gonna entail, but be a part of the department for a day.
That's great. Um, again, I, I also was at the Fab Lab Grand Opening Lab and that was great to see. Got my T-shirt made and saw the three D printer making a dragon, printing nice. Um, this week, we have a Destination Oregon, I think, meet and greet on Wednesday. And, uh, a couple hour session in Thursday on Klaske and I, where a bunch of them are getting together. So I'll be out there for a few hours Thursday, learning about that process. Looking forward to that. Um, that's all I have for tonight. Appreciate it. Meeting adjourned.